Good evening. It's now 5:33, May 25, 2021. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. Councilman Carolina will give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help us as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and further to the best we can be as good stewards of the land and resources for the citizens of Georgetown County. We ask this in the name of Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. We move on down to the approval of agenda. There's a recommendation to move the following reports forward on the meeting agenda. Item 15A pertaining to Nonprofit Spotlight and Third Reading of Ordinance Number 21-18. In ordinance to amend the Georgetown Memorial Hospital WeHaw Campus Plan Development TMS Number 02-1009-018-02-03 to allow for multifamily as a permitted use forward on their meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the recommended changes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Close. Item 15A and the Third Reading of Ordinance Number 21-18 is thereby moved forward on the meeting agenda. We'll go forward with the Nonprofit Spotlight.
Good evening, council members and citizens in attendance. My name is Dr. Aixsa Rodriguez Mariani, and I am the Program Manager of Healthy Learners Georgetown. And I'm here with Ms. Merlethia Green, who is the Student Services Coordinator of Healthy Learners Georgetown. And the two of us make the huge staff of two in our nonprofit in Georgetown County. And we thank you for the opportunity to share with you the work that Healthy Learners does here in Georgetown County. Next slide, please. Healthy Learners is a ministry of the Sisters of Charity Health System, and our mission is to remove children's health barriers to learning with love and compassion so they can thrive at school. Next slide. Health barriers to learning are those healthcare conditions that if left untreated undermine a child's ability to thrive and perform at school. Because if a child is up all night with an uncontrolled asthma, they will not be at school the next day, and if they are, they won't be learning. If somebody, a child, if you ever had a toothache, you know that a child with chronic dental pain is not able to pay attention. A child who cannot see the board when the teacher is teaching or cannot read letters is going to fall behind at school. Next slide, please. Healthy Learners is a state, a South Carolina state nonprofit, and it started in 1992 in the Midlands, and it has expanded throughout the years to different sites. And we have been here in Georgetown County since 2009, working in partnership with the school district and serving children in every school of Georgetown County. Next slide, please. So how, what do we do to address those health barriers to learning? We provide access to healthcare services and coordinate healthcare services to school-aged children in every school in Georgetown County. And the way we do that is we do everything from help families get back on Medicaid if it has lapsed, or help them with the process if they just moved to the state. We provide appointments, coordinate appointments for dental services, medical services, health vision services, and others. We transport the children to the appointments if needed, fill out prescriptions if needed, and deliver those prescriptions, and cover services that are not covered by insurance. Next slide. Usually, our referrals come directly from school nurses. They identify most of the students who need our services. But we take referrals and encourage referrals from teachers, administrators, the community in general. And what usually happens is that a child shows up at a school nurse office with a toothache, or the teacher sends them in because they can't see the board. And the nurse assesses the need for referral for Healthy Learners, and we take it from there. We usually talk to the parents and see what the need is. Does the child have a medical home to begin with? Do we need to establish a dental home for that child? Do they need transportation? Do they have a sibling in the school or other schools that need our services? Does that child who has a toothache also need glasses? So we coordinate all the services that that child may need and partner with our wonderful community healthcare providers that have agreements with Healthy Learners to see our children. And if needed, we transport the child from the school to the appointment and back to school. And now, with virtual learning, we are also transporting children from home to appointments and back home. Next slide, please. This graphic you have in the report that was handed to you, and it's just a snapshot of services statewide, so for the interest of time, it's just showing the services that we provided, including during the COVID pandemic time when schools were closed. We, like many other organizations, pivoted and partnered with others to provide services that are not our traditional services, like food distribution and other services. Next slide, please. Specifically in Georgetown, we partnered with organizations like the Salvation Army, like Catholic Charities, the Low Country Food Bank, to provide food delivery and other services to our community, including in addition to continuing to provide services like medication delivery and in addition to our traditional services. Next slide, please. And I want to highlight this program, Youth Mental Health First Aid, which is a program I'm very proud of, that started in Georgetown County. We piloted it in 2019 in response to the increase in suicide rate of our young people here in Georgetown County and in the state. We provide Youth Mental Health First Aid training, which is a national evidence-based training that, for adults that are in the lives of young people, and trains them to identify and intervene and give that first help to young people who are experiencing a mental health challenge or substance use challenge. And I am proud to say that we have now Youth Mental Health First Aider in every school in Georgetown County. That includes, sometimes it can be a guidance counselor, teachers, administrators, and we have also provided this training to the general community, first responders, mental health care workers, faith leaders, and others in the community. Next slide, please. To date, even with the shutdown that we had to stop providing training for a while, we went to virtual training, like with everything else, and we have now trained 107 Youth Mental Health First Aiders in Georgetown County and are giving that training statewide as well. Next slide. Healthy Learners is a community effort, and to conclude, I want to show this video so you can hear not just from me, but from one of our school nurses, a provider, and a parent of what Healthy Learners means to them. Could just play the video, please.
I'm one of those parents, if my child is sick, it's like I'm sick. I'm one of those parents, if my child is sick, it's like I'm sick. It's a burden on me. And if I have to leave my child to go to work and my child is sick, that's not a good feeling for me at all. For some people, it's tough to take off, to take a child to the doctor. But with this program, I was assured that they would get to their appointments and get back to school, and everything was fine. I was very happy with that program, very, very. Good morning. How you doing?
Healthy Learners is primarily the bridge between families and healthcare.
It's nice to meet you. Yes, are you ready to go with me today?
We just take it for granted that that parent can take their child to the eye doctor to get the glasses. But sometimes, especially in some of our more rural communities, that's a half-day, it's a full day off of work, and they simply can't afford to do that.
We just had a student recently that came in. He couldn't eat because he had such bad dental issues, and for whatever reasons, his insurance had lapsed. So I contacted Healthy Learners. They were able to get the student in for emergency visit and provided care, and that student has gone around just breathing. He was excited. Yes, kids learn better when they're healthy.
All right.
If a child is sick, they're going to be absent from school, and they're not going to be learning. Education is a way out of poverty. Well, to be able to... Be careful. ...be able to be in school to learn, and that's the connection that we make with Healthy Learners. Your shoes untied, be careful. We have a lot of very hard-working families doing everything they can to provide for their families, and sometimes they need a hand up. Say "ah, ah."
We just want to see these kids. We want to make sure that they're taken care of. You know, those are kids that, in our system today, they're being left behind. And I think that that's where Healthy Learners steps in. They're closing the gap for these kids. Donations to them, man, you're making the kids see. You're helping them with their teeth. You're making sure they're getting out to their doctor's visits. When you see that lens go in front of that child, and they're able to see what they haven't ever seen before, that's that moment.
A lot better?
I can read it.
I urge parents, please take advantage of this, because Healthy Learners is a big help to you, your kids. Everyone's healthy, everyone's okay with work, and it's, it is a blessing, very much a blessing.
Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for me or Ms. Green?
Are there any comments from any council members or questions?
One thing I'd like to say, I'd like to commend the services that you're providing to the children of Georgetown County School System, and we hope continues on, and whatever support we can lend to you, advocating for you, I'm sure colleagues we stand behind you in your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your dedicated assistance to Georgetown County and for assisting in making Georgetown County a better place. We really appreciate you. Thank you. Now we'll turn to Item 10B. An ordinance to amend the Georgetown Memorial Hospital WeHaw Campus Plan Development TMS Number 02-1009-018-02-03 to allow for multifamily as a permitted use. At this time, I would like to make some comments regarding Ordinance Number 21-18. At council's last meeting on May 11th, this item came before us for second reading. At the time of my vote, I believe I did not have any conflict with considering and voting upon the matter. I made this decision based upon my reading of the South Carolina Ethics Act, as well as after consultation with legal counsel. Since that time, more questions have been raised regarding my potential conflict of interest with this issue. With those concerns in mind, I spoke directly with the South Carolina Ethics Commission. I also requested an informal opinion from it. The commission stated that, in its opinion, there was a conflict with my participating in the discussion and voting on Ordinance Number 21-18. Thus, in order that Georgetown County Council does things right, that I do the right thing and avoid the appearance of any impropriety, I hereby notify council of my potential conflict of interest, and that I am recusing myself from participating in any discussion of vote on Ordinance Number 21-18. on ordinance number 21-18. In keeping with the State Ethics Act, I have prepared a written statement describing my potential conflict and recusal and have filed that with the clerk of counsel and asked that the recusal form be made part of the minutes of tonight's meeting. At this time, I am turning this portion of the meeting over to our vice chair, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One other statement before I do that.
On my recusal, I will be exiting the meeting forth.
Please let the record reflect that Chairman Morant has left the dais and that the quorum for item 10B is six members of council. At this time, item 10B will be presented by Ms. Holly Richardson, Planning and Code Enforcement Director. Ms. Richardson.
Thank you, ma'am. Just a quick summary since we went over this in very great detail at our last meeting for second reading. This request involves the 65-acre plan development that was approved for Georgetown Hospital back in 2008 at the corner of 701 and Wedgefield Road. It was originally approved for a hospital and associated medical uses, and the current request is to add multifamily to the PD, to their list of uses. The proposal is limited to the 16 and 1/2 acres that are shown on the drawing that's in your packet located on Wedgefield Road. The Planning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval for the request to add multifamily as a permitted use with the following conditions: the developer be required to submit a conceptual plan to be reviewed as a major change to the PD. A significant portion of the proposed units will be affordable based on the HUD definition for Georgetown County, and the maximum number of units allowed will not exceed 90 units. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have for me.
Are there any questions from council? At this time, a motion is requested for item 10B.
Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the ordinance and the change to land use as requested by the applicant.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion on item 10B?
Madam Chairman, I do have a couple of comments. It's rare, in my experience, both as having served on council now for a number of years, that we have overturned a vote from our advisory body, the Planning and zoning commission, that was unanimous in approving this request and substituting our judgment for that entire body. If it was a close vote, that's one thing, but this was a seven to no unanimous in favor of. Staff recommended for approval. And at the end of the day, what council is here to vote on is a land use change and its appropriateness. Not make statements about social engineering, not make other interpretations that may have arisen in conversation. So, I just would urge the council to consider what their purpose in voting is. I would also argue that based on information I've seen passed between some of my colleagues, I'm just not sure there's a good understanding of what affordable housing is. Affordable housing is not low-income housing. It's not subsidized housing. The people that will live in these units will be teachers, firefighters, policemen, healthcare workers. And in a community that the census is likely going to indicate is shrinking, we need, in order to grow this community, we need housing. And we need jobs, of course, but we need places to put people. And our economic development director is on, as I said numerous times, in order to support his industrial pursuits and his job creation pursuits, we've got to have housing. So, for better or for worse, the federal government, state government has put a set of incentives out there that this developer has understandably chosen to pursue. The idea that they'll just pick up and move down the street where there aren't such incentives is, I think, a little bit incongruous. So, I think we're sending a terrible message to the community, that housing community, the industrial community, the developer community, about what our intentions are and what our interests are in growing the economy of this community. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Yes. Thank you, colleague. The issue at hand today is whether to add multifamily classification to the list of approved uses for this planned development site. Currently, it is only approved for a hospital and other associated medical uses. This is Plan A, but I believe we, the county, should be a partner in this creation of affordable multifamily housing and come up with a Plan B and possibly a Plan C. Even though this site was chosen and selected as an opportunity zone, it's a possibility that this is not the ideal location for this particular project at this time. The Opportunity Zones provision is based on the bipartisan Investing in Opportunity Act, fashioned by Senators Tim Scott and Cory Booker and Representatives Pat Tiberi and Ron Kind. This concept was originally introduced in a 2015 paper titled Unlocking Private Capital to Facilitate Economic Growth in Distressed Areas, to help address the persistent poverty and uneven recovery that left too many American communities behind. So, now this concept is being championed by investors, entrepreneurs, community developers, and other stakeholders. These opportunity zones are low-income census tracts nominated by governors and certified by the U.S. Department of the Treasury into which investors can now put capital to work financing new projects and enterprises in exchange for certain federal capital gains tax advantages. The country now has 8,700 opportunity zones in every state, territories, and qualified opportunity zones retain this designation for the next 10 years. Governor McMaster's office nominated only 135 of more than 500 qualifying South Carolina tracts, including three that were submitted by Georgetown County and approved. These opportunity zones are to attract not only residential development, but also commercial and industrial development, which translates, in my opinion, for more job creation in Georgetown County. Governmental research finds that 50 million Americans live in economically distressed communities, places struggling to attract capital and sustain economic opportunity for their residents. We need jobs, jobs, jobs. Good-paying jobs will allow residents to build homes. Investor developments coming here alone for working in the county can then develop housing subdivisions, be they market pricing, single-family, affordable, single-family, multifamily, market pricing, or low-income multifamily developments. Currently, the waiting list for public housing through the Georgetown Housing Authority totals approximately 700 families. I'm an advocate for homeownership. I also believe that individuals would rather put rent money into ownership of a home and build equity in an investment. One of the best stakeholders in this county is Habitat for Humanity under the directorship of Laura Gassler. They, I believe, have one of the best formulas for affordable, single-family homeownership. Georgetown County needs to form an alliance with Habitat for Humanity in providing this needed housing for Georgetown County and its citizens. In conclusion, the Weehawke Track Opportunity Zone will maintain their classification for 10 years. We can return to address this issue at a later time after the many concerns such as traffic issues, environmental issues, wetland issues, and conservation easement issues are clarified and addressed. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Madam Chairman, or Vice Chairman, excuse me, I've got a few words. This has been an interesting journey for all of us. I know, you know, when I ran for office, I was, I really was pushing to develop this side of the county for all the reasons that I've talked to you about. And this has been an eye-opener for me because when I first heard of this particular situation or request, it seemed very simple. We were just going to vote to convert a PD from a medical PD to a multipurpose PD, a residential PD. And as we turned back the layers of the issue, it became obvious to me it was a lot more complicated than that. And once in my studies on all this, it occurred to me and watching videos from what had taken place, I looked out at the audience and there was Mr. Stacy out there. And Mr. Stacy, he and I go back a long way, but I would, I was thinking, you know, if this is simply a matter of changing a PD from medical to residential, why would Mr. Stacy not be accompanied out there by somebody from the hospital system, i.e. Bruce Bailey or some other person that was in a position to support him in his journey to make this change? Instead of that, we have a developer sitting out there with Mr. Stacy from 46 Development, and it became obvious to me that it was a lot more complicated than that. As a matter of fact, he wanted to put in a 90-unit complex that was going to be for affordable, well, I'm not even going to say affordable housing. It's going to be, it's going to be used, or it's going to be occupied by people that can't afford to pay all of their rent. And that's not quite affordable housing. It's got another name. And having said that, I got to thinking about, this is not that simple, and looking into what's really going on here. And I think there's a better way because as a councilman, like the rest of the people on council, we took an oath to support our citizens, to uphold the Constitution and the Constitution of the State of South Carolina. And to me, that's a win-win situation. And this didn't appear to be a win-win given all of the information that we've heard over the past weeks. So, just take heed of what I, and I think I wrote a letter to you folks on council a couple of weeks ago, trying to focus on how simple it was, and it's really not that simple. So, please remember that when you're voting. Mr. Carolina brought up a lot of good facts, and we're not taking this lightly, but hopefully somehow we can make a win-win out of this. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Ms. Vice Chairman, I'd like to speak.
Mr. Newton.
It's been an honor these past several weeks to work with Councilman Carolina and Councilman Anderson on coming up with a plan to address one of Georgetown County's most serious problems, which is affordable housing. Many, many hours has been spent not on how to defeat the Weehawke Plan, but how can we improve and move forward with a plan that benefits all the residents of Georgetown County? Once we have this vote behind us, we look forward to working with all the council members and staff addressing not only affordable housing, but also economic development throughout Georgetown County. Georgetown County faces many challenges in the months and years to come. I believe we, as a council, working together with Administrator Christian and her talented staff, we can develop creative ideas and solutions to make our county a better place to live for all the residents of Georgetown County. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Are there any other comments from council?
I would just like to offer one final thing in defense of Mr. Stacy. He is a Georgetown, or Tylenz Hospital Board Member, and he is their attorney. And so, Bruce Bailey or whomever has dispatched him to represent the hospital. So, I don't know what the expectations of council are in that regard, but I would just like to express that I think he's been unfairly maligned, and he does represent the hospital.
If there are no other comments, we are ready for the vote on the motion for item 10B. Those persons in favor of item 10B, please raise your hand. Those not in favor of 10B, please raise your hand. The motion fails because we needed four votes. At this time, Attorney Chairman Mr. Morant will return to preside over the rest of the meeting.
Madam Chairman, madam chairman, and make a statement.
Let me address that to the attorney first, to see what he has to say.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, members of council. With regards to any council member's request to make a statement at this point in time, inasmuch as the vote has taken place as relates to item 10B, which is the passage of ordinance 21-18, since that vote has been concluded and the motion has failed, there's really nothing before the body or council at this point in time that would require any comments as relates directly to that item. So, I don't think that would be appropriate at this time, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Morgan. Thank you, Attorney Morgan.
A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. First of all, thank you, Ms. Johnson, for carrying that motion forward. Appreciate it. Each speaker will be limited to no more than 30 minutes. No speaker may yield his/her a lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the Clerk of Council before the meeting is called to order. No person shall be allowed to indulge in personalities, use language personally offensive, charge deliberate misrepresentation, or use language tending to hold a member of council, a member of the county staff, or a member of the public up to contempt or ridicule. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have signed up?
Mr. Chairman, we currently have 22 speakers.
22 speakers. And I'm aware that many of those that were attending may, may have wanted to speak on that particular subject matter, and I'm assuming that some of them may have left. I see a lot of people have left the arena here. So maybe we can go down the listing and see who they are and if they are present, then well, we may have to limit it to maybe two minutes for a speaker if there are 22 speakers signed up.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
The first speaker tonight is Marla Hamby.
Good evening, council. I'm happy to see you here. I've been thinking a lot about a lot of things going on in our county, and I'm thinking that perhaps the time has come for county council, the county administrator, to maybe have town halls, maybe quarterly. Instead of having three minutes or less at council meetings, the public could have enough time to ask questions, receive answers, and express their concerns about things in their community and the county. There seems to be a lot more public awareness now, and you just can't expect citizens to cover everything in three minutes. I'm going to speak about the residents that live in, on Pettigrew and around Pettigrew in the Parksville area. They've been promised sidewalks for years, and one person told me 30 years, another person told me 40, but anyway, years. And they don't need those for exercise, they need those for safety now. Pettigrew is much more heavily traveled, with people using it to avoid 17, now that Pettigrew was extended into the backside of Litchfield Country Club. Even friends of mine that live in the reserve in Willbrook are now using Pettigrew to get to Publix. There is a community garden now on Pettigrew where they're encouraging students and young people to come and participate in learning how to grow things. The Herb Society and a lot of things are going on in that public garden, or that community garden that are asset. You've got All For Paws, and those volunteers walk the dogs on that road. And unfortunately, people walking or riding a bike are now in danger of being hit by a car because unfortunately, the drivers are not obeying the speed limit. My other thought is that it's time for Georgetown County to pass a sales tax referendum to acquire land to give for housing. Renting with no hope of owning is not good. Perhaps a rent-to-own system can be worked out. Perhaps the Bunnell Foundation could help with getting grants to help with down payments and low-interest loans. Until every citizen in this county has water and sewer to their homes, until Georgetown County, as the roads, including the orphan roads, potholes, and flooding issues have all been corrected, not one more dime should be spent on recreation, bike paths, libraries, consultants, or anything else. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
David Kaufman. Mitchell Gunner. David Ellison.
I'm sorry, and I'm not sure whether this is really time to present this or not, since y'all have already voted on the change of the rezoning of the hospital pub. But I'd like to make it known that county council ordinance states to prevent land speculation at the expense of the general public and to assure timely of the projection of accordance to the stated development, construction will start on all properties rezoned puds within two years after rezoning. If construction has not begun within that time in the rezoning, the planning commission shall review the zoning of the property unless presented with cognizant reasons to allow additional time, shall initiate proceedings to return the zoning of the property to its original zoning. And with us now knowing that the hospital is not going to use the property for their purpose, isn't it time to have the property rezoned to its original rezoning of agricultural and forestry? Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is David Ellison. I live in, I'm a Wedgefield resident, retired Air Force veteran. A long time ago, in the late 1700s, the Queen of France, Marie Antoinette, when she found out her people were suffering and going through a hard time with all kinds of issues, food issues, housing issues, and so forth, what did she say? Just give them cake. Just give them cake. We don't have an affordable housing issue in Georgetown County. We've got a jobs issue. We've got a public policy issue. We've got a leadership issue. Let's not just give cake to our citizens. I ask the question, rhetorical question. Name one subsidized, government-subsidized housing project. Low-income, let's make no mistake about it, this is a low-income subsidized housing project. Name one that's ever met its desired intent in Georgetown County. Name one that's ever achieved success in the state of South Carolina. Name one that's ever achieved success in America. I tell you the God's honest truth, we in this room, as individuals, we are our brothers and sisters' keepers. We are our brothers and sisters' helpers, not the government. I love our government officials, and I thank you, sirs and maams, for your service to our, to our county, and I thank you for your vote to table this issue. But we need to remember, as citizens, that we've got to stop depending on the government for every bloody thing. We've got to depend on God, we've got to depend on family. We, as local individuals, local church people, local businesses, private citizens, we need to be our brothers and sisters' keepers, not the government. Now, the government has a role. What is that role? Provide tax incentives. Time's up, okay. Thank you. Nice.
Maureen Vacy. Mary Wall.
Good evening, council. My name is Jacqueline Williams, J-A-C-Q-U-E-W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S, for the next video. I stand before you tonight, I must say, extremely disheartened, disappointed, to say the least. I have been here for several of the council meetings, and I have heard the comments that were not made up, wasn't made up by me, wasn't made up of, by anybody that represents the core value of what I would say I believe and what I stand for. I have sat and I have listened in this council meeting to people using the term, and I quote, "those people from the projects." I have sat in this council meeting and I have listened to people saying, "We don't want the culture." I have sat in this council meeting and I have listened to people say, "We want to keep our community the way it is," which is, which is a predominantly white community. Those three statements represent three things at best: racism, classism, and a play on segregation in the 21st century. And for the vote that happened here tonight, congratulations, because you have upheld those core values that this country was built upon, over, over what we have fought for, and we have tried to, to, to turn the tides in this country for inclusion and for diversity. You, this council, have placed me in a position where the escalation of the ideology of that vote makes me fear for my children because of the ripple effect. And for anybody that sits on this council that looks like me and voted, no woe be unto you.
My name is Wesley Gibson, and I speak for Citizens of Progress, and I too am disheartened by the vote tonight. I sat out there and I heard them say, councilmen said, "We need jobs, jobs, jobs." How are you going to get the jobs to come if you don't have a place for the people to live once they get the jobs? And then I turn around, and these people, like, they said, those people, I'm going to say, I don't know who it was, but someone had a video done by Brighton, Freedom of Speech. I have the video, if anybody would like to see it, I'll gladly show it to you. And it was strictly racial, racial, because when you look at it, they talked about the NAACP, President Marvin Neil had to leave, but I'm a part of that too, so I'm going to speak for him. He had to leave. And like Jackie said, they showed Jackie, they showed Marvin, and then they go on to try to attack our chairman, Mr. Moran, and his wife, Dr. Moran, two upstanding citizens in our community. And I, and I'm upset about that. I don't always agree with Chairman Moran, but I'm not going to let nobody insult his integrity, his wife's integrity, and their character, and the work that they've done for this community. And I think it's terrible that this video was circulated in the white community because a white person sent it to me, said, "You need to look at this." And it was done professionally. Y'all have done a disservice to our community, and like Jackie said, anyone that looks like me, woe unto you.
Ebony Hughes.
My name is Ebony Hughes. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself, and also speaking up for educators in Georgetown. Yes, we do have an affordable housing problem in Georgetown today, that vote for the use of the property, but I understand that moving forward, we still have to come up with a plan for affordable housing. Wherever that spot is going to be, it needs to be on that side of the county. Why? Because of educators and the rural areas. We're talking about Carver's Bay, Plannersville, which is a very large area. You've got Pleasant Hill, Browns Ferry, all those different areas, and all the teachers over the years, good ones that possibly would have stayed, left, because they have to find housing in Myrtle Beach, they're supporting a whole nother economy, you know, or they have to travel all the way to Paulies Island. They should be able to serve these children, and a lot, a lot of children in rural areas are underserved. And we need affordable housing on that side of the county, wherever that is. I don't know if there's a plan or not, but I'd like to just go over a few statistics here. In Georgetown, the racial makeup, at least in the city, is 57% African-American, 40% Caucasian, and then there are other smaller groups, Native American and Asian. But that's where it needs to be moving forward, because we have, if you look at teacher salary in Georgetown, it's only averaged about 37, excuse me, $27,000 per year. That's affordable housing. That doesn't sound like an estimate to me. CNAs, cashiers, all the essential people that we really needed during this pandemic, they're all included in affordable housing, and that's why, for that reason, it needs to be over on that side of the county, that needs to be considered. The median income of Georgetownians is only $21,000 a year.
Merrill and Hemingway.
I want to say very quickly, there is, it's already been noted, there is, there is a video out there going around, and it is racist, and it is intended to intimidate us. But let me assure you that I already have a police file on record with threats against me, and I still show up, I'm still doing the work. So I want y'all to get a good angle of me on this camera when you do your second video that you've threatened us with, that we will continue to show up, and you have picked on the wrong people. And I just wanted to get that out there. In case y'all didn't know, y'all need to go look this up, because this is what black people face every single day. And let me say something about the federal government. You would not be sitting there integrated if it was not for the federal government. Local government, state government, did not want integration. So for you to come up with the federal government with these coded words about the federal government, shame on you, and you need to read a history book. If you want to talk about housing, you need to read Color of Law. It breaks down what the government did, preventing black people from moving into certain neighborhoods. It talks about public housing and how it was started, and it talks about the help public housing did for white people. But when black people worked to get a leg up, our government, local, state, and federal, deliberately and strategically worked against us. I have a question for county council members, because recently, the county government did a study on affordable housing. I'm assuming that they don't work in a vacuum, so you knew that study was happening. Did any of you hold a town hall meeting and educate your people that the study was being done about affordable housing? And we want to hear your voice too. We want to give you the heads up so you can be a so you can be an informed constituency. I'll answer that for you: No. Yet you sit here and you talk about, "Oh, we're going to sit down with our folks about economic development and jobs, jobs, jobs." So I actually agree with you. We do need economic development. But we can't trust you because you can't even do your basic job of holding town meetings, town halls, and meetings with your constituents. So why should we believe you now? Because your actions speak for you. And they do not speak well. Am I angry? Yes, I am. Because you play these games and we're tired. It takes strategic, deliberate economic development. It's not just jobs, jobs, jobs. It's about business creation and sustainability. It's about investment in small, local businesses, black and white. It is about treating your people with respect and that we have intelligence. So let me tell you what I've done as president and founder and CEO of the Gallegucci Chamber of Commerce. I went out here and I got grants. Just informed that I received a grant for $283,000, to create jobs right here in Georgetown County. But you want jobs to come in on the white knight shining and shining armor to save us? When your best investment is right here locally, developing affordable housing so people don't have to worry over their head of what about me keeping a roof over my head, which will allow them to create a business, which will allow them to be job creators? You should be ashamed of yourself, every single one of you. I'm about to create jobs in Georgetown County. And why can't I do that? Because my parents made the sacrifice and had to go out of state 56 years ago to get funding to build their houses. The same attitude persists in 2021. And it gives me the freedom. It gave me the education to have the ability to create a chamber of commerce and to write grants which will benefit all people. Because I was taught by a generation that when you are uplifted, you bring others with you. And that's what I'm doing. Creating something for myself, and I'm giving back because I was given an opportunity. That's what affordable housing does for people, whether it's multifamily or single housing. So shame on you. You can't worry about a job if you don't have a roof over your head. You can't create a business if you don't have a roof over your head. So shame on you. And we'll remember this at the polls.
Donald Giliard.
This is a very rare occasion for me. I come to council meetings. I do watch everything that you all do. But this issue was particularly important to me. It was important because it signals where we're gonna go in this country. Everybody know that that issue, with that track, was controversial for one reason, and that is, they felt that people who were below a class than them wanted to live by them. I mean, that's really the issue. It's not complicated. And as I watched the vote, when I see people who looks like me vote against that, it affects me personally. Because I know what our ancestors did to make these opportunities possible. I know that. I know that there is a bigger issue when you prevent them from putting that housing there. I know that. There's racial intent behind that. And I just want you all to know that there are some of you all, I don't have a reach long enough to be able to reach you across the bridge. But if you're on this side of the bridge, I can reach you just a little bit. And we think that that vote was insulting. And we right now declare that we're gonna try to show up at these polls and we're gonna let you know you're not gonna vote against our issues and represent us. Thank you.
Michael Wheeler.
Just want to say thank you, Council, for doing the right vote. But Georgetown County does need affordable housing. But better yet, we need a property manager, not a rent collector, a tenants. All tenants need a tenant's advocate. On a different note, is there anything we can do with the recycling centers? It seems like one person is sitting there, just sitting there, doing nothing. Not to help, not to check what's going on with what we are bringing in there. The hours are, if I get home from work, I'm just like the guy from two sessions ago. Can't get to it due to the fact the hours. Is that something we can look at to try to make it more for everybody, more accessible, to do that? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's the last speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We move down to the approval of minutes for regular council session on May 11, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do approve the meeting minutes from May 11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the minutes being approved as indicated? Please raise your hands. Okay, minutes approved. By virtue of approving the agenda earlier on, there are three procurement matters included on the consent agenda. And they have been approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Contract number 20-046, procurement number 21-024, and procurement number 21-025. We move on into our public hearings. The first one is public hearing regarding ordinance number 21-16 and ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary county purposes for Georgetown County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2022, to provide for the expenditure thereof and to provide for revenues for the payment thereof. The floor is now open for public comments regarding the public hearing, that is. Hearing done, hearing is now closed. We now move on down to public hearings for ordinance number 21-19 and ordinance to amend the fiscal year 21 operating budget of Georgetown County. Floor is now open for public comments regarding ordinance number 21-19. Having hearing done, floor is now closed. Moving down to appointments of boards and commissions. We'll start with the Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to move to reappoint Mr. Theodore Russell to the Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee.
You've heard the recommendation, Ms. Johnson. Is there a motion to approve her recommendation?
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Close. We'll move on down to the appointment on the Building Code Appeals Board, or motion passed, on the Building Code Appeals Board. Councilman Gudges.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to reappoint or recommend the reappointment of Mr. Tom Croca to the Georgetown County Building Code of Appeals Board. He is an architect and he's the former code official, building official for Georgetown County. Very qualified.
Can you move for the appointment of Mr. Croca back to the Building Code Appeals Board?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. We move down to the Disability and Special Needs Board. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, I move for reappointment of Ms. Willie B. Thomas to the Disability and Special Needs Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Close. Motion carries. We still make an appointment to the Disability and Special Needs Board. I move for the appointment of Mr. Johnny Basemore Jr. to fill a vacancy in the Georgetown County Board of Disabilities and Special Needs. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please raise your hand. Close. Okay, motion carries. We move on down to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Gudges.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend the reappointment of Mr. Christopher Olds to the Zoning Board of Appeals, as recommended.
Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Christopher Olds to the Zoning Board of Appeals? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. We move on down to the Resolutions and Proclamations. Resolution number 21-15 will be presented by Public Service Director, Mr. Funny.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this evening, I'm here in front of you to present Resolution Number 21-15. A resolution authorizing the county administrator and county council to execute a Community Development Block Grant mitigation sub-recipient agreement between Georgetown County and the South Carolina Recovery Office to fund an infrastructure improvement project referred to as Mingo Pond that will mitigate the impact of future disasters. We have recently been notified that this particular grant has a value of $939,529 in CBGG mitigation grant funds. This is issued from the South Carolina Department, South Carolina Disaster Recovery Office. This resolution this evening is necessary to accept the funding. The funding will not be coming to Georgetown if council does not accept this resolution this evening. The impact would be that we will forego the $939,000. And tonight, I recommend that council accept the resolution and approves it. At this time, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Does any council member have any questions for Mr. Funny? And you indicated that it's a grant that you request the county to accept?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21-15?
Mr. Chairman, I make the recommendation for the adoption of the CBGG grant funds for the utilization in Georgetown County.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We will move on down to Resolution Number 21-16. We will have it introduced by Councilmember Bob Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This issue has been going on for quite some time, as I understand it. It's been sort of a battle between the state and Hotchkiss Barony. There's been an effort to overtake all the land in the North Inlet, et cetera, in Hotchkiss Barony. And with not knowing where the end game is, the state has decided to push back on that. And I got a call from our state Senator Stephen Goldfinch asking us to do a resolution to support what the legislature is doing. It's in my district. And I know Mr. Newton may have a few words he'd like to say also, so I'll turn it over to him.
Yes, this resolution, which I do support, the current and future need to access to North Inlet, which we have had for generations, in hundreds of years. North Inlet is a valuable asset to Georgetown County for its, not only its citizens, but as well as our many visitors we have. North Inlet is accessible mainly by boat only. It's a pristine location in the county, probably one of the prettiest places in Georgetown County. But losing access for local fishermen and just plain recreation would be a drastic impact to Georgetown County. So I 100% support this resolution.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21-16?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please raise your hand. Close. Motion carries. We move on down to third reading of ordinances. Ordinance Number 21-17 and ordinance to amend Article 4, General Provisions of the zoning ordinance to add Section 426, dealing with lighting requirements for residential developments along waterways. Our Plan Director, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. The proposed ordinance involves the regulation of residential lighting for structures located along the waterways, specifically in the Wakamanak area of the county. Based on our discussion at the last meeting and a few comments we've received, there are a few proposed changes to the ordinance at second reading, which I'll go over. The description of the Wakamanak area has been amended to reference the Winyaw Bay, specifically as the southern boundary. The definition of a waterway is shown as being changed. This definition leaves out rice fields, streams, canals, and ponds, and limits the definition to creeks, rivers, and lakes. Also, the measurement for the exterior lighting has been amended to include lumens as a means of measurement in addition to Kelvin. As we talked about last time, Kelvin measures the color temperature of the light source and is used to determine if a light is warm or cold. And a warmer light produces less glare. Lumens are more typically used as a way to measure the brightness of the light or the output of a light. And again, we are also recommending that lights be recessed or shielded. And we believe recessed or shielded lights that are limited to 1,500 lumens and 3,000 Kelvin should provide the amount of light that's needed at the residence, but would also give us a guideline towards limiting nuisances to nearby neighbors. The last change is a minor one, but to the last sentence, that's where we require that the lights be on a timer. And we changed the "and" to that sentence to an "or", and that would allow for a manual shut off so that as long as the lights have the ability to be turned off when they're not in use, then they wouldn't have to be required to have a timer. And those are the changes since second reading. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Richardson?
I would like to thank Ms. Holly for making those changes.
Is there a motion to approve third reading of ordinance Number 21-17?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And as you stated, there have been some revised language and changes made to the ordinance. Is there a motion to amend?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I'm not sure what the appropriate time to interject is, but would like to offer an additional change.
Okay.
Holly, your definition of water bodies again, could you read that, please?
Yes.
Water bodies covered?
We have, this current definition proposed for third reading excludes rice fields, streams, canals, and ponds and limits the definition to creeks, rivers, and lakes.
Okay. I would respectfully recommend that we not exclude canals. I'm thinking of the canals in South Litchfield. I'm thinking of the canals in Davido, canals in Sandy Island, and several other locations where you might have a house opposite another house on a canal and extremely blight or glaring light could be an issue. So I would respectfully suggest that stay in.
And I would disagree with that. Number one, Sandy Island is not on the peninsula and number two, we're getting down and drawing straws here on details and I bring up what the federal government tried to do at one time where they wanted to control every ditch and every water hole in the United States. So I would respectfully disagree with that. And I don't know where you take it from there.
So there's a, there's a motion to amend to incorporate the initial changes. We never got a second on that particular amendment, obviously. So we're going to call for it again and see whether there's a second and may get a legal opinion from our council here.
Are you talking about a second to the original amendment?
No. Yes, to the original amendment, but I want to get an opinion from legal counsel first.
Correct. Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of council, the motion that's currently pending before council is to include the amended language that was incorporated in the agenda as described by Ms. Richardson. Should there be a second to that, at that point in time, Mr. Goggins could make an amendment to the amended through reference and basically re-put back in the term canals. Should there be a second, then there would be a vote on whether or not to include or put back in canals. Based upon that vote, it would revert back to include the amended language, whether with or without the canals, and then it would be for a final, third and final vote.
Okay.
I can draw a flow chart if you'd like. It might be easier at this point.
Yes.
So again, right now, before council is the motion to amend. There needs, I believe that motion has been made. I don't recall. Is there a second? I apologize. There's been a second for the motion to amend. I think Mr. Goggins interjected before there was a second.
Okay.
I think it would be appropriate to get a second to get that matter before the council at this time, should there be a desire of council to do so.
Is there a second for the amendment? The initial amendment?
Okay.
Second.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I think we're over here trying to get and make sure who made the original motion to amend and then there would be a second based upon that. And I believe Madam Clerk is indicating she missed who made that original motion to amend, so it might be best at this point in time, just so that we were 100% clear for the record and, uh, members of the public, that we start over with that. We obviously have reached the third reading of the motion. Now, we would need a motion to amend to include the original language that Ms. Richardson discussed.
Okay.
I think I made that motion. Okay. To go along with the amendment.
Okay, alright.
That Holly just read.
Okay.
So I did make that motion.
In understanding at that point in time, Mr. Anderson, thank you for clarifying the record, then council would need a second to then continue to take the matter up, should it want to do so.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Alright, so now, before council is the amended language, I believe it would be up to Mr. Goggins, should he so desire to do so, to make his motion to amend to reincorporate or reintroduce the term canals into the definitional section.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make that a motion to amend the amendment to re-include the word canals into the language.
Is there a second? Okay. We'll first move on the amended amended motion to, so, all in favor of the amended amended motion? Please raise your hand. Motion passes. Now we'll move on to, we move on to the amended motion with the amended provision of the additional language. Okay. Alright. All in favor of the language incorporated into, incorporated by the amended amended motion into the original motion? Please raise your hand.
In other, in other words, the word canal is being added to?
That's correct. That's correct. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay. Motion carries. So canal is being reinstated within the text. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, now we need to have third and final reading of the motion as amended once and for all, for final purposes.
Okay. Alright, will you carry that motion?
What he said.
I'm going to verify to my legal counsel to have him carry that motion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, this time it would be appropriate for council, should it so wish to do so, to entertain a motion to approve of third and final reading of ordinance Number 21-17, an ordinance to amend Article 4, general provisions of the zoning ordinance to add Section 426 dealing with the lighting requirements for residential developments along waterways as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a motion first?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve, third reading of the, based upon what our council has given us. I'm not going to try to repeat all that. So hopefully that's satisfactory.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on down to the second reading of ordinances. Ordinance Number 21-16, an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary county purposes for Georgetown County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2022, to provide for the expenditure thereof and to provide for revenues for the payment thereof. Ms. Langston, our county finance director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Council. Tonight we're presenting you with ordinance 21-16, the proposed budget for fiscal year 22. It's totaling 90 million, 352,000 dollars. This total proposed budget has changed lightly from what we discussed in our workshops. It does include a millage increase for law enforcement of .2 mills. We're also proposing the transfer of .5 mills previously allocated for BOAS, Bureau of Aging Services, to the general fund. All the other millages, millage allocations remain the same as they are for this current year. Budget ordinance 21-16 also includes a proviso to allow for some new revenues proposed for the fiscal year 22 budget and it also approves and issues, allows for the approval and issuance of three reoccurring contracts. An overview of the proposed budget was provided to you by email in the form of an executive summary, so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Any questions for Ms. Langston? Is there a motion to approve second reading of ordinance Number 21-16?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there a motion to amend to incorporate the text as ordinance was introduced by title only at the previous meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we now vote on the amended motion? All in favor of the amended motion? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Now we'll move back to the original motion. All in favor of the original motion with the incorporated text? No, is there a motion to approve the amended motion with the incorporated text?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we, we'll move on down to reports to council. Fiscal year 2022 memorandum of understanding with Chairman of Commerce, annual tourism marketing budget fiscal year 22. This statement, and Mark Stevens to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council, Ms. Christian and staff. First of all, on behalf of the Chambers Board of Directors and on behalf of the staff, I want to thank you so much for the privilege of serving as the county's DMO. This is a responsibility that we take very seriously and spend a great deal of time and energy and effort as we look to managing these dollars in the most effective way possible. Tonight with me is Mark Stevens, who's our Director of Tourism Development. He's going to present a little bit more information to you. I just will say, you know, it's been an exciting and an exacting year for tourism in Georgetown County this past year. We've worked harder than ever before. We never stopped. We had to pivot, as everyone else did, very frequently, but it was an exciting year for us. So Mark is going to share with you some information about some of the highlights of this past year and talk about the year ahead.
Thank you, County Council, for allowing me to speak. The county's marketing efforts paid big dividends during this past year, which probably wasn't expected from a lot of people in what happened at this time last year. When most of the world saw the tourism economy collapse, Georgetown County soared. Our marketing efforts over these past few years to showcase our county as a pristine, family-friendly destination known as South Carolina's Hammock Coast clearly has taken hold with the traveling public and those travelers looking not only for relaxation but safety as well. Our vacation rentals, homes, and condos, our historic ends and bed and breakfast were just what the public was seeking this past year. Georgetown County has experienced unprecedented numbers over the past few months, according to state accommodations tax collections reports. Year-to-date, state 2% A tax collections show an increase of almost 11% over the previous year. But if we break that down, we've seen months of double-digit increases. For example, July 2020, a 25% increase. September 2020, a 24.5% increase. October 2020, a 26% increase. November 2020, a 44.7% increase. December 2020, a 22.5% increase. January 2021, a nearly 14% increase. From summer to fall to winter, our shoulder seasons, the Hammock Coast continued to climb. One of the things that we started this past year, we started subscribing to AirDNA, which allows us to see real-time details for Verbo, that's vacation rentals by owner, and Airbnb properties in Georgetown County. And that information itself has been enlightening, which is what we were hoping to do, that we could understand this a little bit better. For example, April 2019, we can learn this from AirDNA, there were 9,000, 9,000 listing nights booked in Georgetown County via VRVO or Airbnb. Contrast that to April 2021, where we see 15,800 listing nights booked. So from 2019 with 9,000 to this year with 15,800, a 76% increase. Number of properties on the market in April 2021, we see 864 booked properties. And last year, April 2020, it was 788 booked properties. In April 2019, we keep going backward, there were 638 booked properties. You can see increase over increase over increase. Rental revenue from 2020 to 21, 2021 is up 10% for those properties that are renting at the 50th percentile. Just take a look at some of those revenue numbers. In April 2019, that amounted to $3.2 million in revenue. In April 2020, a year later, that was 4.5 million. In April 2021, just last month, that number is up once again and substantially, reaching 5.68 million. In 2021, 22, we will continue to support growth in our shoulder seasons to make the Hammock Coast a year-round destination. It's something that we're seeing happening as we focus on sustainable tourism, using a range of marketing strategies, strategies that include interactive, print, broadcast, social media out of home, as well as a robust public relations program. We just finished, 1st of May, a nearly two-week stint where we shot all-new photography. We did over a week of filming here on the Hammock Coast and some of that footage we're going to be using for broadcast advertising in key markets and that's a new initiative for this coming fiscal year. We're going to continue to work on some of the shoulder season things, like interest in birding, which is a big deal here and that brings in a lot of interest and a lot of money. We're going to continue to promote outdoor enthusiasts, of course, in addition to the beach. And I do want to say that we have conversations regularly, of course, with accommodations partners. We can get a lot of data from AirDNA, like I said, all those sorts of things, but we have conversations on the ground with accommodations partners who are indicating, and I just want you all to know this, once again, that this summer is looking very positive. We see those numbers, but we hear that too from our local people. We also plan this year to conduct a study where we're going to track digital ads, who saw them, where, who actually travels to the Hammock Coast, and we can also find out where they spend their money when they're here. So that's going to be another layer of information that we're trying to gather, trying to understand what we're doing and how we can better market in the future. I just wanted to give you some of that information because it's very positive information. It gives you a good indication of the positive output that we see year over year and how interesting it was, despite everything that happened last year, how we improved. And Georgetown County and Beaufort County were really the places in South Carolina that saw that happen, when Charleston and Myrtle Beach and Greenville and Columbia were falling down because of COVID, because of the way that that's set up in those locations, that we really did succeed. And I think a lot of that has to do with how we've been marketing over the last few years and that precedes me as well, and the support that we've been given from council and we do appreciate that. I don't know if Beth has something else. If you have questions, both of us are happy to answer them. We do approve, we do appreciate everything you all do for us and allowing us to do this as your DMO.
And the only thing I would just add is that we do hold monthly tourism commission meetings, management commission meetings. Those are public meetings. You appoint the board and we certainly would welcome you to participate in those meetings when your time permits and you can learn those meeting dates at visitgeorge.com.
Thank you, the statement and Ms. Stevens. Any questions for either one from council? Is now is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 MOU with the Chairman of Commerce and the fiscal year 2022 annual and the fiscal year 2022 annual marketing budget?
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Not seeing any further business coming from council. Is there a motion to adjourn? Don't want to go home?
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment.
All in favor? Well, first, any discussion? All opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn.